Six o'clock, I will call the With County Board of Supervisors back into session from our last recess. We'll note for the record, we do have a quorum with all members present. And I'll turn it over to Madam Chair.
Good evening Chairman Vault, Vice Chair Lawson, members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for hosting this joint meeting. At this time, I will call to order the school board meeting, noting that all members are present and we have a quorum. And at this time, I'm going to turn this meeting over to Dr. Poole because he has all the information you're wanting to hear.
All right, well, thank you Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to present this information to you. You have several sheets in front of you, three of which relates to the upcoming budget process, and one is related to the Scott Memorial Building Project. We'll follow the agenda and we'll jump in with the budget. The first thing I will discuss is the upcoming budget. We have two bits of information right now that we know, one of which relates to the BRS rates for the professional employees in With County, with With County Public Schools, and I'm sure you guys probably received some of the benefit from this as well. We had a rate reduction from the BRS from 16.62% to 14.76%. And that will affect the FY23 budget should be fairly favorable. Now, with that, you will have some savings, but it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar savings because of the state revenue that you do receive from the BRS. Since the rate is lower, we will receive less money from the state, but based upon the calculations that we've run, and this is a rough estimate to this point, we're looking somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 in savings on BRS. But again, we won't know the actual number until we get a little deeper into the process. The local composite index for the upcoming biennium has been released, our local composite index as of today, and this is based upon the locality's ability to pay. Basically, the local composite index tells us how much the state kicks in, how much locality is required to kick in. Our local composite index at this time is .3204. Now, the local composite index for the upcoming biennium will be .3277. So what that means is the locality is doing a little bit better than it was. Those rates are based upon taxable revenue, property, a number of factors go into that equation. But at the end of the day, that means that With County's share goes up slightly, and I mean very slightly. So the state portion will be reduced by just a little bit. Now, if you're asking me what the dollar amount on that's going to be, I cannot even venture a guess at this point. We should have some information coming from the governor's office in the near future. I think the 16th is the date that is set for the first budget that we will receive from the current administration. Now, since this is an election year and we had an election with the governor, you have two different budgets that will come into play. One that's released in December, another one that is released in January. And they could be similar, or they could be worlds apart. Now, we don't know where we're going to be yet, so the December budget will basically be one of four that will come out. You will have two governors' budgets this year, one House and one Senate. So instead of the typical three that we see, we will see four. And it will be a little later in the cycle when we receive the more relevant information, which will be in January. So just a little information for the upcoming budgetary cycle. Now, following along with that, you'll see the single sheet of paper here. And I'm going to try to give you guys, and that's everyone, an idea of how we go through the budgetary process. Obviously, it starts now. Anytime that you start receiving numbers for the upcoming cycle, you start putting them into the pile of all the other numbers, and eventually, we will have the final result. But what we have seen to this point is favorable for us based upon, if nothing else, the BRS rates. Don't know about health insurance, don't know about a number of other things, but we anticipate the state should be favorable again this year based upon the revenues that we have seen projected and the surplus that's currently there at the state level. Now, the process for central office and superintendent school board, starting in, well, this letter goes out tomorrow, and this is the same one that is sent out basically every year to each of the school administrators and the department heads. This is a schedule of when we start with the interview process and the time that is allotted for each school to come in and they give us their information. We start with a schedule, and that schedule leads into how many sections we'll have to have, which equates to how many teaching positions we have to have. So that all builds upon one another. The request for technology, additional transportation, any of those things come through this process. So once we meet with the principals, and when we meet with the principals, it is every central office administrator sits down with each principal. They prepare their budget based upon what they see and what they need in the school. So when the process starts, we build from the bottom up as far as what the requests and needs are from the school level. Now, there are certain things that we have to include. For example, we have to keep the lights on, we have to pay the gas bills, all of those things are in on the division level. But we want to make sure we keep the schools and their needs first and foremost, so that's the first step in the budgetary process. Now, you can look through here, and I won't read it to you, but it includes everything from food service to federal programs to special ed, transportation, and obviously general instruction. We have to look at any anticipated carryover at the federal level with Title I, any of those programs, because that will affect what we have on not only the revenue side, but also the expenditure side. So that is the first step here. Now, you'll look at this sheet. This comes into play. This is the budgetary allotment sheet for each school. And this is the money that comes out of the budget and goes back directly to the school. If you'll see the different categories, you'll see instructional materials, remediation, office supplies, repair and replacement, and then down the list. Each level is based upon something a little different. So when you see different per pupil expenditures or per pupil allotments at different grade levels, there's a reason, because there are different budgetary constraints at each level. So what we have on these sheets, the school will suspend their money, and this comes from the budget request, but this is the basic allotment, so this is the bottom line on what they're spending at the school level every year. So when they spend that money, they make the request back from us for reimbursement, and we put it back into their coffers. Now, when we get into the budget itself, when you look at the line items within the budget, for example, you'll see materials and supplies. Well, a lot of those materials and supplies, even though it's just one line item, a lot of it is tied directly to these allotments that go back into the building. And if you have any questions about any of them, certainly feel free to ask, but we'll go into detail later on in the process. And if you have certain questions, and it may be something that everyone has, and I'll take the time to make sure that you understand where this money comes from in our budget and then goes back out into the school building. And finally, this is the information that we have, this is the current year. And this is a new item that we're putting out. And I want to thank Katrina Hall profusely for doing all the heavy lifting. So she did a lot of work to put this all together. Now, what we hope to be able to accomplish with this, the information that you'll find in this budgetary booklet is not only the budget development process, which gives you a rough calendar of the process that we go through on a yearly basis. This is what we did last year. Obviously, we don't have everything for this year, so this is a snapshot, and this will serve as a benchmark or a baseline moving forward. You'll see the division staffing, and these are based upon the full-time, part-time jobs in these professional areas. So that gives you an idea of, for a short while longer, we will still be the largest employer in With County. We won't be able to carry that distinction too much longer, and kudos to you all for everything that you've done to bring those jobs into the county. I'm certainly appreciative of that. Operating fund revenues, and this information is based upon the state account code and the information that is contained therein. So if you look at the revenues, there are basically four areas for revenues that the school division receives money from. They are local, state, federal, and the other revenues. And there is a little bit of information for each category, and you'll see how that is broken down on the charts or on the graphs. For example, revenues from local sources. You have operations, that have operations with the SSOs, and that's where the county pays for the school security officers that are not SROs, and that runs through our coffers. And then you have the county appropriation for debt service and the total revenue for local sources. And you'll see that the local revenue accounts for 33.2% of the overall budget. And now, the overall budget is the bottom line of 51 or 50 million, a little over $50 million. That includes debt service, that also includes food service in the overall budget. So that is a bottom line figure not tied to the operating budget. The operating budget is a little bit different. You don't have debt service, it's not part of the operating budget. So that's an example of why we included the overall budget as far as a percentage rather than the operating budget, as far as a threshold. You'll see the revenues for state sources and the fiscal year '22, state revenue for 56.1% of the overall budget. And then federal dollars, 4.8%, and then revenue from other sources, 1.8%. And that includes where we have money for transporting certain pupils, rebates and refunds, dual credit courses, E-rate reimbursement, Medicaid, reading recovery. Reading recovery, for example, is where we receive money from another county that also participates in that program. And then revenues for cafeteria funds. And cafeteria or food service is basically a fund unto itself. Food service is a dollars in, dollars out, so it is a self-sustaining program unlike other programs. So you want to make sure that you have enough revenue coming in to pay your expenditures, obviously. And fortunately for With County, our food service program is self-sufficient and has been for a number of years. There are a lot of school divisions and counties that cannot say that. And in fact, our food service program has a budgetary surplus, which is basically a fund for additional operations when should we need it, a little over $600,000, I think. Is that the last? That is somewhere in that neighborhood, which is, they look for you to have six months of operating funds in addition to what you have on a yearly basis. And we're right there at that number, so that is a very good thing. If you look at the operating fund expenditures, this is broken down into budgetary categories, just like you see on our budget. Instruction, administration, attendance and health, transportation, maintenance of facilities, debt service, technology, and cafeteria food service. And you can see how the expenditures relate to each of those funds. Obviously, the largest portion that we have is related to instruction, and that goes without saying, because that is, that's our job, that's our responsibility, that's our primary function, educate students of With County. Under the expenditure classifications, there's a brief description of what falls into each of those categories. And then instruction, and if you'll look at the charts, you can see how those numbers weigh in, for example, with instruction, the vast majority of instruction is tied to people, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, principals, et cetera. There's a small, very small portion related to capital outlay, materials and supplies, other charges, and purchase services. But the vast majority of those expenditures relate to personnel. And under this category, you'll also see a further breakdown of how those categories relate to instruction. And it's broken down again further into those classifications for classroom instruction, for guidance services, et cetera, throughout that section. And we have that for every category within the budget. Hopefully, this serves as a good bit of information and a resource moving forward. So what we're looking to do with this document, obviously, you'll still receive the line item budget when we present it, but we will update this to have a side-by-side comparison as far as how we stack up to the prior fiscal year. So hopefully, shortly after, or in March, give or take, depending upon what the state chooses to do, whether they drag their feet or not, we should have this information for '23 that we'll be able to put into this document as well, so you'll have a side-by-side comparison for FY22 and FY23. So, questions to this point? All right.
You might have any questions?
I'm not good going into the line, different lines.
I don't know whose ideal this was. I'll give Katrina credit, because I don't want to give you credit. It's very clear and easy to understand, and I appreciate having the information. So, thank you Katrina.
She did all the heavy lifting, I promise you. In all seriousness, that was something, and Katrina did take a tremendous amount of time to pull all these numbers together to make sure she put this into the document. And in a very professional format, really appreciative for everything that she does. Now, over the next couple of months, obviously, we will be knee-deep in budget numbers, especially starting in January, but hopefully, going into March, when we really start discussions for FY23, as far as our next meetings, you guys will have a better bit of information. It will be some definition behind what we have and how it is presented and how it lays within the budget. And hopefully, I didn't want to get too deep into the weeds tonight with that, because we haven't started preparing the FY23 budget. But if you take a lot of this information and look at the budget itself, while the categories will be very similar, the way it's presented here corresponds with the state code and how it is broken down. So there may not be an absolute 100% correlation between this line item and that line item, because some of this is a compilation. But the overall picture should be much clearer based upon the definition and how it's laid out as far as what falls into each category. For example, you may have a number of subcategories that have contracted services under instruction that may fall under one line item in this book, whereas on the line item budget, it's obviously line item, but there's no definition behind it. But you should be able to extrapolate out where it is and how it falls within the major categories of instruction, administration, attendance and health, because when you get through those line item budgets, you'll note there are subtitles as you go through that budget. And those subtitles are basically what's contained in this budget book, it's just a different way of presenting that information. But if you get it, and you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask, and I'll do my best to make sure you are very clear on what we have or where something may be within the budget. But I wanted to make sure that it was evident from the materials and supplies, because that's a large line item within the budget. And when you just see materials and supplies, and there may be a line item for $250,000 or $300,000, well, when you go through and look at the money that goes back into the schools on their allotments, it becomes a little clearer, and you can see how those play in on the whole. So, for example, instructional materials, band, course, science equipment, chemistry equipment, all of those fall within the materials and supplies line item on the budgets. But there are a lot of different materials and supplies. We can't take unless all of these things on the budget, or you get into minutia so fine that it's hard to get out. So if you have questions as far as what falls within each of those lines, certainly ask, and we'll do our best to make sure you're clear on it.
What's the final date, or do we have a final date for the fans who are now doing all the meals in the cafeteria?
Anticipate that it may be rolled again, but we don't know. Again, it's a guess.
Right.
It's a guess, so we'll see.
But we don't really...
We're going to ride the train as long as we can.
Well, you ride that rocket.
That certainly does help, that certainly does help us, especially with the increase in food costs that we've seen. If you've taken a look at our website, we did have to put out some information, and it's not just us that's affected. It's food service across the country, restaurants. You know, there are times when, you know, we may have a certain item on the menu. Well, better luck next time, because it's not going to be on the truck. So that is something that we've run into, and it's a little difficult. We try our best to stick to the planned menus, but that's not always possible. So we want everyone to be aware of that, that it's just like in a grocery store, sometimes you may catch it at the right time, sometimes you may not. So that's something that we're working through as well.
Dr. Poole, kind of that same discussion point about the cost, how's the rise in diesel fuel and gas, how's that affect y'all's budget this year?
We're actually doing okay with it right now. When we...
What'd you budget for, $4 a gallon?
Huh?
You budget for $4 a gallon?
We, that was one I got burned on one year, so I try to keep a little extra in that line item. Because that is something that is truly volatile, that you don't always know where you're going to end. And when you're trying to put a budget together in March, if you could tell me what the cost of diesel fuel is next July, then I want a part of that crystal ball that you're looking in, because I have some other questions. So we try to stay a little bit ahead on the cost of diesel fuel because of the volatility in those markets. Now, that adjusts up and down, but we try to keep that in a little bit higher, because that saves on years like this, where it's probably going to be a little more expensive than what we anticipated. It puts, the actual, diesel fuel is not necessarily as hard as it is as heating fuel or heating oil and natural gas. That's more costly line item for us than diesel.
And I'll say, and I don't know that it's happened, I haven't heard it's happened, but you know, I've seen other jurisdictions have to cancel bus routes because of lack of drivers, and I know that's facing everybody, but I don't know what y'all doing to keep that from happening.
Well, that's a challenge. And there are days when we have basically maintenance, bus shop, and everyone that we can dig, bar, and steal driving the vehicle. And occasionally, you'll run into where you have to run a double route, but not very often. We've tried to keep that to a bare minimum, and so far, we've been able to do so. We did apply, Mr. Skeens did apply for a grant through the state that became available this week to try to help with some of the problems that we're facing. We were eligible, I think, for $50,000 grant, so we'll see if we were able to get that to have a little additional money to pay for bus drivers and pay for training and some other items. But we'll see if we get that money, and if we do, we'll add that to the tools in the toolbox in order to try to keep the buses running on a timely basis.
Dr. Poole, I can ask one question just while we're on the current year budget. A lot of your expenses on this sheet show up as per pupil expenditures. How is our population or numbers compared to what we budgeted this year?
Actually, going through October, we were right at 3,700 where we budgeted, but it's dropped since then. Right now, we're looking at unofficially 3,681, but we're still pretty close to where we were. And that's the unofficial number today, now that fluctuates.
But that's close, which is good.
Absolutely. We originally started out last, let's see, FY21, I think we were looking at 3,800, but that was, again, that was when we were planning for a budget before a pandemic. So then we adjusted the following year to 3,700 and actually basically right on it. And so we're pretty close to the same number, because we came into this year a little bit blind because of who else is coming back, who's not coming back, did somebody move that we didn't know. I mean, there was a lot of question marks, there were a lot of question marks for this year, because there was a period where contact was limited, so we were pretty close in our estimates, so fortunate in that regard.
I don't have any, but to echo what Mr. Vault said, thank you for this, this is very helpful, so.
Certainly welcome.
It's nice to have.
And when we get, again, when we get to March, when the budgets get around there, I'll have some more information for everyone and show you how that ties into the line item budget and have a representation from this year to next year, and it should become a little clearer beyond what it is.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have enough money to put back to take care of that?
Well, that's what I was... No, I don't have quite that much, and I don't have that much squirreled away on this one.
That's a coy subtle way of saying he wants to move on.
All right, no objections, we will go on to the Scott Building Project. As you know, this is something that we've been working on for quite a amount, quite a good bit of time. The reason we're discussing this now rather than next year is because of the federal dollars that are available to us through ESER 2 and ESER 3, and there's another one that I can't remember the acronym, CRRS, or something. Anyway, that's, there are a lot of pots of federal dollars right now that tie to construction related to either additional spacing or HVAC and air quality. Now, the projects that we are looking at, obviously, all relate to those issues. Scott is the largest of those projects, and Scott is the one that we have tied to ESER 2 funds that the spend-down date is September of 2023. Now, as you are aware, and this, and thank you, Mr. Bayer, for providing this information. If you look at the sheet with the debt service, this discussion was originally in this all this discussion was originally in this, all plans had been made for twenty-four rather than twenty-three. But when you have the amount of federal dollars that are available for a construction project that will not affect local taxpayers at all, in essence, you're receiving six million dollars from the federal government that does not affect the property tax rate of anyone in this room. That's a plus. That's why we're looking at, that's why we moved this up one year. The amount of money that we have in ESER two is a little over three million dollars for the Scott project. And then there's a little under three million in ESER three. Now, the difference between those two, ESER two has a spend down date of September of twenty-three. ESER three has a spend down date of September of twenty-four. So, we don't have to have everything finished by September of twenty-three. And with some of the issues that we're running into, if we can get steel and everything else, that's going to be a blessing for us. So, the timeline is a little elongated for this project compared to what typical projects would be. So, we actually have a spend down date drop dead of September of twenty-four. So, that gives us a little time, but a portion of it has to be out by twenty-three. So, when you're talking about three million dollars, again, you're about halfway through the project based upon the percentage of ESER and then what locality would be funding with that. Now, and going back to what Mr. McRoberts said, no, not this budget cycle. I'll have that money in there. But fortunately, we're not looking at FY twenty-two where we will have to have anything other than some A and E fees that would be spent. Now, the A and E fees that we have, I think Mr. Bayer's explained this in the past. There's some money that was set aside with money that was returned back to board last year for A and E fees.
Y'all remember when they turned back, I want to say around one and a half million or whatever, we moved a million dollars over into the school construction project last year in anticipation of that. In the financial report, that money is still sitting there earning interest.
And that is a positive thing, since that money has already been allocated. It, in essence, is not new money that you have to come up with for anything. So, that's another plus. Because of the pandemic and the way everything played out, that revenue came back, even though it was already on the books. That revenue came back and helps pay forward some of these expenditures. So, that helps cut down the overall cost of new money that will have to be provided for the project. Now, we tried to make this as palatable as possible for everyone when we had to move it forward, or move it up, rather. So, when you're looking at an overall project, the original, what we were, I think the original price was sixteen million. Well, I don't know if you purchased anything as of late, but those numbers have gone up a little bit. We're looking at a roughly fifteen percent increase in our overall cost. So, that sixteen million is now eighteen six. And that was something I had, Mr. Wilson, who is behind me, they spent a great deal of time poring over that information to try to get an accurate number. Now, at this point in time, the way everything is, your guess is as good as mine. That's the best number that we can really nail down. But because we had an overall cost increase, that also affects what we will be able to go back into the federal dollars and allocate for this project. So, you also have to have a fifteen percent increase in the way we set aside money in ESER three. So, while we had about five point eight total in there, it now goes up to about six point seven because of that additional increase. So, that keeps, is proportional to what the overall cost increase will be. So, what we were originally looking at, at ten million, is now about twelve million, actually, just a little under twelve million. And based upon the debt service numbers that Mr. Bayer has provided, if you look at twelve million at three percent, that's a debt service payment of about eight hundred and two thousand dollars. Now, in twenty twenty-four, when the first round of the two thousand three, two thousand four construction drops off, you have a budgeted savings from twenty twenty of seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That's where we're looking to really, the first payments will really start being made on the debt service when it's closer to a finished project. And then the following year, you have an overall savings of nearly one point two million, because that's the second round of funding that was borrowed in two thousand three, two thousand four. So, at the end of the project, because we were able to move it up a year, you're going to have a little additional upfront cost, but you're going to save roughly four hundred thousand dollars on the back end because we were able to use the federal dollars in place of local dollars. I know that's a fair amount of information. Are there questions about that and how we came through that?
Not so much questions about that, but I guess Scott being the elephant in the room, let's talk about the evil leader, the elephant. Where does that put us in line with the Spiller project?
Well, I don't know. I'd like to get this one going.
Hey. But I... If you want to sit in the hot seat, you got to have these answers. Well, and I know that's, you know, there are seven people up here, I think we all agree that both of them need to be fixed. And I'd say there are seven people sitting in front of us that will all agree that needs to be fixed. I'm, you know, I'm just kind of looking, you know, down the road. Where does that...
Yeah, I understand. And this is best guess. And this is, I don't know how clear the crystal ball is, but if we can finish this project, if we start this project June of twenty-two, best case scenario is going to be eighteen months, so you're about December of twenty-three. Now, considering everything that's going on, if we can finish this project in eighteen months, I will be extremely pleased. Now, what I'm anticipating is that it may run a little longer, so we may run into, you know, February, even June of twenty-four. Now, what we've typically done in our renovation and capital improvement is you have at least a year, if not two or more, before you start the next project. So, conceivably, you could start Spiller in twenty-six. Or if you want to start it in twenty-five, you could start it in twenty-five. But I would not say that you start right on the heels of the other, because it's a little difficult to make sure you can get all the plans and everything else in place and have someone that can clerk those jobs and spend the time that is needed without adding additional costs to the project. Now, Spiller's going to be a big project, too. It may not be of the same size as Scott, but it's going to be a big project, because that is the largest school population-wise in the division. So, that's the best guess. I mean, four, four to five years from now would be Spiller.
That's why I put you on the spot.
That's all right.
And I know that y'all have had some discussions with, you know, the historical significance of the Scott name. Are you planning on keeping it at the middle school or looking at naming it?
That's what we're working on right now. And we've been meeting with Mrs. Waggy and Mr. Goode, and met with members of the community, members of African-American community, and we've had a very positive discussion. We have another one actually tentatively scheduled for fifteenth of this coming month. So, we want to keep those lines open, because we feel that it's very important to make sure we honor the heritage and the significance that's tied to that site. And that site is the important part of this project for them, because that is what has been home. That is a significant tie to the community. So, the name, in essence, will stay at the location rather than going with the building. Now, anytime that you're renaming schools, now, that's something we have to put a timeline together, and we want to have an acceptable final outcome. So, once we can tie that down, we want to make sure that we have in place something that will bind the board to this name at this location going forward when we do make the name change. As we build the building at George With, it would keep the name Scott Memorial for now. We don't want to name it something and then change the name back to something else. So, when we have the final construction at Spiller, that's when both names would be changed to their final...
Permanent name.
Permanent name, yes. If that makes sense. And I think that's the best way that we can do that. That way, when we dedicate that building, that's when that name becomes part of that location.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Poole on the building project? I will say, and I apologize, I should have introduced Mr. Steve King, be coming on the school board in January. And Mr. Bayer, will you make sure he gets the topic of this?
He has one.
No, he didn't get the county part.
He didn't get the money part.
I even wanted to let him have the chair.
Anything else on the Scott Memorial building project?
I will just say that I'm excited definitely about six million, six point seven million dollars. That saved us a lot more than that saved us.
And he don't get excited about much.
He mentioned a couple of things there, the A and E fees that are out there. Hunter's here with us, so we know that the A and E fees might be too much. But we will need to look at...
You pay taxes here, too, now.
I wouldn't laugh.
We will need to be looking at amending and appropriating funding for that this year. And we can do so out of that million dollars that's sitting there, depending on the savings they've got throughout the year. And we've got plenty of time to do that. Secondly, if we proceed with this as presented, which I think is a well-laid out plan and goes in the future well, we would need to be committing on that we're going to look at borrowing those funds to do so. So, I told you all at the Baco Conference, I met with a couple of financial individuals and companies that we've dealt with, looked at options on that, explained to them the spreadsheet that shows the numbers, where we currently are, how we can look at borrowing funds, whether we borrow and do interest-only payments for a certain timeframe, whether we borrow and just start paying on it and I'll say doubling up a little bit. It's not true doubling up the numbers, but putting both of them in there. I don't have a crystal ball, and nobody has a crystal ball, but I do think that the interest rates will continue to rise over two thousand twenty-two. And if they do so, and if we think they'll do so, it would be advantageous to us to go ahead and say we're committed to the project. We get a bid out, and if it's eighteen million dollars, and we got six point six million, and we need eleven point four million, that's what we go out and borrow, and we do it earlier this upcoming year to do so. I don't need the answer on that tonight, but I would like for you all to think about that. But basically, you know, from the school board and the board supervisors, if this is the route we're going, then Dr. Poole and I need to come up with the final financing and have it on paper.
If you're looking for an answer, whether or not this board is going forward, I mean, I'll open the floor up. I know where my position is. I mean, because I share the same worry that interest rates are going to keep going up if we're committed.
Yeah.
So, let's be committed tonight and start the ball rolling, because, you know, between what Wes has generously, I mean, Dr. Poole generously offered to donate out his ESER funds. I mean, you know, I've said it before, I'm thankful because of people like you were financially stable. But I think, you know, to be a good school with tax money, I mean, me personally, I think we need to go ahead and move forward with the project.
Yeah, I think for me, I mean, if you talk about what you're talking about, the interest rates could potentially continue to rise. And Dr. Poole talked about the materials, the issues, and the cost. I think we need to go ahead and lock it in and save as much money as we can before these prices continue to go up. And not only that, the supply chain is not getting any better. So, if we want to deliver on this twenty-four completion date, we need to start now.
And I have no idea what will come out of the General Assembly this year, but between infrastructure money that the Fed is throwing out there, between the discussion about school, school funding, school construction, you know, we're giving them to go ahead and continue down the path they're going. We'll start paying to borrow the money, but if they come out and say there's two percent literary loan money that's available, you know, using old term, we got a shovel-ready project here ready to go. We'll put our name in for the literary loan and do that. If we don't, then we go out to the open market or whatever and look at the rates there.
And there is a push right now for moving, and this is a little bit longer answer, but starting in the eighties, the literary fund up to that point was predominantly used for construction. Then in the nineties, two thousand, two thousand ten, that literary fund has since been used primarily for VRS retirement payment. So, what there is a push for right now, especially with small and rural schools, push that money back into construction, because small school divisions and rural school divisions do not have necessarily the capital setting at their feet in order to build projects. And especially when the vast majority of the buildings in those areas are older and most in need of either renovation or a new build. So, there's a tremendous push right now from a lot of number, or from a large number of divisions in the state to try to push that money back into construction and infrastructure on the literary fund. And I think there may be some movement, but it's to be determined in how they use some of the surplus money that's sitting there now.
Mr. Chair, do we need to make a motion to have proceed on?
If you want to, that's fine.
I mean, I know how I'm going to vote.
I will make that motion that they proceed with their plan.
I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second. I've been raised up for three years. I'm glad we waited.
Stacy, I'll call a draw, but I'm going to have to give a second to Ryan. She's not lying. So, I have a motion, a second. Is there any more questions or discussion?
I will say real quick, because you left out a part that I found really interesting when you presented at, I guess, the school board meeting or some meeting, about the room for expansion on the, and I'll let you, I don't want to mess it up.
All right. If you look at the plans, and this is very similar to what, if you remember when we did our dedication at George With. And of course, those pictures are a little bigger than this, so you can get the idea. What we have on the facility itself, there are a total of twenty classrooms that are built within the main part of the building, and that's this area here. Now, at the entrance, which is basically between the senior wing at George With and the technology center, that's where the entrance to Scott Memorial will be located. Now, above that, if you look at the second page, you'll see above the administrative suite is the library. And when we moved that library, that freed up a couple of additional spaces where we put classrooms into. And this was when, you know, with the anticipation that there will be, uh, a number of students coming into the building, obviously. Now, if you look over to the left of the gym, that area will be reinforced. We need to add classrooms. Rather than expanding the footprint of the building, we have classrooms that we can build some walls and put a little roof over it and be done. That will be a much quicker, uh, expansion if we need it, rather than digging foundation, running everything that we need to because it's already there. And I want to credit, uh, Z M M and Hunter Wilson for coming up with some ideas like that because that's something that we can do in a hurry rather than needing to wait. So, that is a very beneficial, uh, component of this project. And when you're talking about two additional classrooms, you're talking, you know, forty to fifty additional students that you can accommodate, which is a good thing. So, kudos to them for that idea, and that will save us hopefully in the future when, uh, we see some expansion.
Thank you. Does that?
In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we have two schools to be paid off?
Actually, there's more than that.
What, what is this money going to be? Will it be used to pay off Scott?
The, the debt service that we will pay off in, in, um, in twenty-three, it's five hundred and some thousand dollars. And then twenty-four, it's another four hundred and some thousand dollars. That will, what we are not paying in debt service at that point in time on those projects, will go into paying the debt service on these projects.
Anybody else have any questions?
Comments?
Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Uh.
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 Congratulations, Dr. Poole.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
If you don't make it a superintendent, you might want to get into selling cars.
Come back, you're smart.
No. However, that's just because I know.
And thank, thank you all for your commitment to doing the right thing, especially the students of this county. And you know how important it is. I mean, you, you know me, I've spoken to all of you. Our most valuable resource, our most valuable asset is what we have in these buildings every day. These kids are the future of this community. They're, they're the future board members. They're a future superintendent. They're a future county administrator. And I'm living proof, and he's living proof. I promise you, if you go back and talk to somebody or a teacher, and they'll shake their head and say, nah. But hey, it turned out for the best.
You mean wife, Mr. Stacey?
I'm going to say a thing.
But it turned out for the best because that's what we have every day. And the people and the students that come out of our classrooms compete with, cannot, they don't just compete here locally. They compete globally and they succeed. And that's what we are all about, and I applaud you for your commitment to that because that pays dividends. So, thank you.
I'll just say, you know, going back to the, what you handed out, the finance aspect of the Scott project, you know, this is the first meeting we've had, um, where you have set the big chairs. Congratulations. I will say that, uh, you know, you've been my go-to and, and a lot of board members' go-to person when they need a member of the school board. I applaud the school board for placing you in that position, even if it has an interim title. And I look forward to working with you in the future. You, you have the unique ability to make stuff very clear. I would look forward if anybody has any comments.
Get busy.
Do what? Get busy. I will say, I wasn't going to say this, you, you were talking about you and Mr. Bayer been project education with county schools. I wasn't going to say this because I, I've already gotten re-elected, but, you know, just imagine, you could have been president if you went to re-trade.
Hey, that's true.
Thank you, Mr. Stacey. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I have something. I'd like to give you a brief stat. I would like to, and I would like to say always, thank you. Cam, if I look at you, I don't know how long.
Long time.
Way up, and I know when you got to a train, it's going to hell on earth. But I do thank you all. And just keep up the good work. Uh, take care of our kids. They're the number one thing.
Thank you.
And following up on that, we, we will be saying goodbye to Mr. Stacey after, I can't do that math. Many, many years.
Been a while. Been a while.
Enjoy your retirement. I don't know what you're going to do with all that free time. Maybe you and Koi can take that golf.
Dad and a paid group.
Hey, I'm on the six-year plan now. I'll go ahead and retire. I just want to say I want to thank Koi publicly for the years that he spent, we spent together on the school board, always a champion for the kids in With County. And he continued that role on your board. And thank you, sir, for all of your service through the years. Thank you so much.
Thank you from the Land Mines District, Mr. Poole.
Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Bob Ward, anybody have anything else they want to say or no?
I would just like to say thank you all so much for backing this project. I just, my heartfelt thanks to all of you. If we have nothing else, we will adjourn our side.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Hankins, Mr. Bayer? We'll be adjourned as well. Thank you all.